Non-resident department heads as condition of employment with the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas prescribing the amount of the fee and its uses and for other purposes up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance creating a privileged fee for non-resident department heads as a condition of employment with the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas prescribing the amount of the fee and its uses and for other purposes.
I'll move for adoption for purpose of discussion.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second that the ordinance creating a privileged fee for non-resident department heads as condition of employment with the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas prescribing the amount of the fee and its uses and for other purposes. The floor is now open for discussion.
Well, this is my ordinance. It's called a community-friendly privileged fee. The reason I did it, we have at least $600,000 every two weeks in payroll, which in a month's time, that's 1.2 million dollars in payroll. And just say on a three-cycle month payroll period, it's 1.8 million, just in payroll alone in the city of Pine Bluff. And what this privileged fee would do is bring some of the money back in from our department heads, back into the city for our youth programs, putting sidewalks in. And we only have 31% of our employees who live outside of the city as well. I'm just asking you all to either just vote it up or down or support it. I feel like it's a good ordinance. And, uh, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion fails. Seven to one.
Mayor, we have an ordinance addressing the hours of sale and operation during which alcoholic beverages may be served in commercial establishments and private clubs, repealing ordinances number 6313 and 6321 regarding the hours of operation of commercial establishments and private clubs establishing a new rule for related purposes up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance addressing the hours of sale and operation during which alcoholic beverages may be served in commercial establishments and private clubs, repealing ordinance numbers 6313 and 6321 regarding the hours of operation of commercial establishments and private clubs establishing a new rule for related purposes.
Move for adoption.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second that the ordinance addressing the hours of sale and operation during which alcohol beverages may be served in commercial establishments and private clubs, repealing ordinances number 6313 and 6321 regarding the hours of operation of commercial establishments and private clubs establishing a new rule for the related purposes. Floor is now open for discussion. Yes, sir?
Let me say this, as a pastor here in the city, I'm knowledgeable enough to know that you cannot stop people from going to close. You can close a club at 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock, people are gonna go out. People drink all day, not just in the midnight hours. Bars are open all day. Restaurants serve alcohol all day. People get killed in restaurants during the day, during the evening, during the morning. If you close these clubs at 1 o'clock, all you're going to do is allow illegal underground clubs to open up. And what's gonna happen, you're gonna have your neighbors next door to you or right down the street are gonna start having house parties when you close the club at 1 and they'll be at your house at 2 o'clock to whatever time they get ready to leave. Now with the clubs closing at the particular time that they're closing now, the police have designated areas where they are assigned to go to with familiarity. But once you do this, you will have clubs all over this city. I'm not as old as some of you are, but some of you remember prohibition. I rest my case.
Okay, anybody else? Any other discussion?
Yes, I do, I do, Mayor. All of the clubs, at least 90% of them are in the fourth ward. I have talked with the owners, most of them are unhappy about the ordinance. However, PJs is one of the best clubs in the state of Arkansas, and it's in the fourth ward. They've done their best to keep the clubs safe day and night. I know that for a fact, once again, they're in the fourth ward. Listen, I get out every once in a while myself and shoot pool. We got pool tables in the fourth ward, I get out and meet with some of the citizens in the fourth ward. And I made a campaign promise as well, when I was campaigning, I went to the clubs, some of the club owners stopped the music and let me talk. I left literature on the tables in the club, even put literature on the cars on the parking lot, and I promised them if they need me, I'd be there for them. Once again, the club owners, they treated me well. And once again, like I said, the biggest part of the clubs in the fourth ward generates traffic, it generates jobs in the fourth ward on university, in that area. And once again, I made a campaign promise as well to the owners.
Any other discussion?
Is there a compromise point we could reach for a little bit lesser hours instead of going to 5:30? Does anybody know how many are really affected by the 5:30, 2:00 to 5:30? How many clubs are in that, have got that kind of permit?
We have eight permits within the city.
I thought it was only like three or something, that go every, till 2:00 to 5:30.
It's about three. And, you know, because they need to open till 5:00. Now, most men, they said they don't need to open till 5:00. So, they may be there doing chores or something like that, so you're not having to open them. But it's just, it's on the idea of, because they have a license that says that you can't stay open till 5:30. And it's not bothering anybody that they stay open that late. The incident reports that they talk about doesn't show any significant, if hardly any at all, incidents there before 5:00. And to your, and all of the incident reports that has been given to us with these charts, where it seems like crime is up and down and on, and, you know, I don't know where the chart came from, but I asked for incident reports, and in January, there was two incidents. February, there was seven. March, there was nine. April, there was seven. May, there was ten. June, there was ten. And the part of July up until the date that he gave me, the chief gave me this report, there had been one through July. Now, something that does bother me is that some of these incidents on this report did not happen to clubs. It's programmed in that if the police stop someone in the area of PJ's nightclub, it shows up at 24:11 North Avenue. And which to me is not fair, because it gives the idea that there are a lot of incidents at this club, and it's not. And also, you know, people have told me that on Saturday night, they do roadblocks between PJs and the bridge out there. And when they have any of those incidents, PJ says he own the address to hate. So, if they catch someone with intoxication, drugs, or whatever, it goes to that street. But even with all of that, it comes down to the numbers that I said, and that's very, a very small.
Their permit they get from the ABC though tells them what hours they can be open, right?
They say that they stay open until 5:00.
But some of them only can stay till 2:00, isn't that correct?
Well, once it stays till 2:00, then they're not private clubs, and they know the clubs.
So, we have eight permits, and not all eight are operating. So, we have a very few number that stay open until 5:00, very few.
There's three of the clubs, if I'm not mistaken.
So, therefore, you know, you have, there are very small numbers, and they, it's their rights to stay open. You know, it's like saying any other business, whether it's a grocery store, or clothing store, or whatever, that will, some stay, they're closed at a certain time, so you should, you know, close safely. You know, Brookshire, save, you know, save you on, you know, at a certain time, because it doesn't fit somebody's thinking. And, you know, a couple of people can't think for every time.
At this time, I'd like to call the chief to address some of the concerns regarding activities at the clubs versus if the clubs were closed at 1:00 or 2:00, and what would happen with the shift. And I certainly don't want to speak for him, I think that he can address that and make it very clear as to how that could be managed.
Which first?
Okay, as far as if the clothes were closed at 1:00 or 2:00, and the shift from people leaving the clubs at that time and going out into the community.
Well, and one of the things that we saw when we provided the data product, and that's what this is, and that there will be more in the future. But in this case, it did deal with the clubs, or whatever the timeframe, from 2:00 to 6:00 a.m. In some instances, on some dates, we charted a 200% increase in all of them. Now, and we handled it, and we can, and will, and et cetera. However, my preference is that the units busy themselves working criminal control, looking out for commercial burglies, and doing things that are friendly to business and to investment in the community. The, you know, I'm not trying to be unconscious of the city with my statement. What I'm saying is that our units are busy doing things such as doing things that are club-related, the club-related traffic is manned. They're busy with club-related traffic between 2, I mean, there's a 200% increase, the numbers are there. Yes, ma'am, it shows that. My promise is that.
If it's 200%, you must have gone from 2 to 10, because it's not, it's not that many numbers. It's not that many numbers. And people, you know, even if you're out, if you're going someplace, say at 12 o'clock at night, sometime 11 o'clock at night, we see your unit sitting behind the building on the parking lot, you know, so they're, they're not that busy.
You're so.
And, you know, yes.
I'd like the unit number.
I didn't get the unit number, I wasn't gonna go up there to get the unit number. But you give me your number, and I'll tell you next time where they are.
36441, I'm easy to get hold of.
But, you know, but the fact is, as far as the clubs are concerned, and PJ's in particular, he employs police officers on that parking lot, and I know that you have stated that if you are the permanent chief, that you will stop that. And I think that's very bad for our personally, because these officers are making money, they're making extra money doing what they're willing to do. And the same way, if they work in Brookshire, they be in Brookshire. If somebody get in Walmart, Walmart have a lot of problems, and so they work there.
And I wouldn't argue at any point by any means, because you're right about that, but whereas I'm not the conscious for the city, I am the conscious for the police department, and my preference would be that they do not rip my badge out to a place that has a primary business of alcoholism. But, and I understand that's not what's on the table for discussion.
Right, but, you know, I don't consider ripping out a badge, because I think when you become a police officer, you become a police officer for the people. Whether they drink alcohol, or whether they going to church, that you are a police officer for the people. And these people are making and living, and they are controlling things properly, and, you know, and there's just no reason to fool with them because of the fact that you made a promise to two people, you know, that has been trying to get them closed down from day one.
Well, it wasn't my promise, again, this is the result of a data product. The first one that I gave y'all was the...
Okay, go ahead and finish, sir.
As to data products, the first one dealt with dilapidated housing. We showed corollary between dilapidated housing and crime, and I presented that information to the council. And the council took whatever degree of action that was regarding the ordinance that followed. Same thing here, this is the result of a data product, and there will be more in the future. Everything we do is a data-driven approach. We don't just shoot from the hip, so to speak. We're gonna look at the numbers, and when the numbers indicate something where an ordinance could help offset some of the work that the officers have to do, I'm gonna present that. So, there will be more. One quick, the roadblocks, ma'am. Since January, there hasn't been any from Pine Bluff PJs, and there won't be, because that's another one I deadly against. We don't do roadblocks. Shall not, will not. Okay?
Okay.
It's random, to arbitrate.
Any other questions for the chief?
Well, I've gotten some calls late, but it's not from, about the clubs, the services, it's about the people going to the restaurants, or whatever, getting some gas, or something with the music up loud, the people living close by. And I talked with Steve Mueller as well, and he was saying it's something like $52,000 to $55,000 a year coming from the clubs as far as a tax for the city of Pine Bluff. And saying that, and that's just revenue, and you have people working there, and you have ladies that buy school supplies, it's an economic impact as well, and a lot of it is coming from the fourth ward in the city of Pine Bluff.
Well, this is not my question to ask, but how do we want to identify ourselves as a city? You know, do we want that kind of revenue? That's the question, that's the difficult question that you have to decide.
It's clear, it's a city of progress. It's up on the banner right there, that's how we wanna do it. It's up to all of us to make it a city of progress, don't you?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Does this come, did this graph come from the police department?
Yes.
Okay. So, if I'm looking at this right, from 12:00 to 2:00 in February, there were zero incidents. From 2:00 to 6:00, there were 11. In March, from 12:00 to 2:00, there were six. But from 2:00 to 6:00, there was 20. April, 12:00 to 2:00 was zero. 2:00 to 6:00, it was like 12. May, 12:00 to 2:00 was four. 2:00 to 6:00, 20. June, incidents between 12:00 and 2:00 is two. And then June, between 2:00 to 6:00 was 10. So, it over, it triples.
But if you look on the back, at the incident report, it doesn't, it doesn't...
It does, it does match that. It matches it exactly. It matches the graph exactly.
Okay. Let me say this before we take it to a vote. We started this because as we were campaigning, that was one of the things that I heard throughout the whole 18 months, is that our citizens are very concerned about public safety and the image of our city. And I take that very seriously. And one of the areas, it's called layering, layering, and one of the areas that we have to address, or we should address as public officials, or elected officials, is first and foremost, is public safety. And any avenue, in any area that we can address, that will help reduce crimes, help reduce calls of service, and help improve our image, because as, I'm sure each and every one of you know this, that we're being watched tonight as to how we vote on this particular ordinance. Site locators are watching us. People are watching us to see what we do here. And if public safety is the first and foremost thing here, we're talking about moving, I'm for making amendment to it and moving it to 2:00, if we can do that. But public safety is the most important thing that we can consider. And just listen to a 14-year-old talk to us, that speaks volumes to us adults as to what we need to be doing and be responsible. And public safety is the number one issue. So, I ask you, please, I understand investments, I understand what people are doing, but is it, is it at the cost of our city and our public safety?
Previous question.
Sir?
Previous question.
I don't understand what you're asking me. Okay.
Municipal rules, we don't have that.
Okay, any other discussion? Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. Row call?
Officer Bryman?
Aye.
Officer Eastland?
Aye.
Officer Stapp?
No.
Officer Walker?
No.
Officer Boyd?
No.
Officer Brown?
No.
Officer May?
No.
Officer Hope?
Motion fails.
Mayor, we have an ordinance waiving competitive selection and authorizing the mayor to contract with local government services LLC for cable television franchise fee payment, compliance services, and appropriating funds for the contract, up for the first reading.
We can't hear up here. Thank you.
An ordinance waiving competitive selection and authorizing the mayor to contract with local government services LLC for cable television franchise fee payment, compliance services, and appropriating funds for the contract.
Move suspend the rules and place ordinance on second reading.
Second.
Okay, it's been, a motion has been made and second that we suspend the rules and place the ordinance up for second reading.
An ordinance waiving competitive selection and authorizing the mayor...
I have to vote on it.
Sorry?
Yes, we need to, yeah.
Officer Bryman?
Aye.
Officer Eastland?
Aye.
Officer Stapp?
Aye.
Officer Walker?
Aye.
Officer Boyd?
Aye.
Officer Brown?
Aye.
Officer May?
Aye.
Officer Hope?
Thank you.
An ordinance waiving competitive selection and authorizing the mayor to contract with local government services LLC for cable television franchise fee payment, compliance services, and appropriating funds for the contract.
Move further, suspend the rules and place ordinance on the third and final reading.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded to suspend the rules and place the ordinance on second reading, all in favor? Third reading, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye? Or row call, sorry. Row call.
Officer Bryman?
Aye.
Officer Eastland?
Aye.
Officer Stapp?
Aye.
Officer Walker?
Aye.
Officer Boyd?
Aye.
Officer Brown?
Aye.
Officer May?
Aye.
Officer Hope?
Aye.
An ordinance waiving competitive selection and authorizing the mayor to contract with local government services LLC for cable television franchise fee payments, compliance services, and appropriating funds for the contract.
Move for adoption.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second that an ordinance waiving competitive selection and authorizing the mayor to contract with local government services LLC for cable television franchise fee payment, compliance services, and appropriating funds for the contract. The floor is now open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have an ordinance providing for the rezoning of certain territory in the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, and repealing ordinance number 6453, up for the first reading.
An ordinance providing for the rezoning of certain territory in the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, and repealing ordinance number 6453.
Place it on the calendar for the next meeting. We have an ordinance amending the 2013 budget to add a line item for council members to be reimbursed for travel expenses, up for the first reading.
An ordinance amending the 2013 budget to add a line item for council members to be reimbursed for travel expenses.
Place it on the calendar. We have a resolution to modify the job title for the interim director of economic and community development.
Whereas on or about December 28, 2012, Larry Matthews was appointed to be the director of economic and community development department. He served in that capacity until January 1, 2013, at which time the mayor reduced his salary and changed his title to that of interim director of economic and community development. Whereas Larry Matthews continues to bear the full responsibility of running that department without adequate recognition through his title or his salary. Whereas during his tenure, Mr. Matthews has continued to maintain and improve the department, address concerns by the housing and urban development, communicate with auditors, and coordinates the direction of bond projects. Whereas Larry Matthews has been employed in the economic and community development department for over 30 years, he has in-depth knowledge of the departmental objectives and the local, state, federal, and federal regulations which govern the application and dispersment of funds. Whereas it is, it is the desire of the city council of the city of Pine Bluff that the qualifying title of interim be removed from his title. Mr. Matthews' salary and title should reflect his wealth of knowledge and ability to run this department. He should be recognized as the director of economic and community development. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that hereafter the council and its deals with the director of economic and community development department shall consider the director as the head of the department without any qualification as interim or temporary. Moreover, Mr. Matthews, his salary should be commensurate with his position and years of experience.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that the resolution to modify the job title for the interim director of economic and community development, the floor is now open for discussion. I would like to state at this particular point that Mr. Matthews and I have had a lengthy discussion regarding this, because there were many concerns that we had with community development regarding the HUD audit, the BKND audit, there are several findings, but most especially because this appointment was made the last business day in 2012 by the former Carl Reedus. And my point was, is that he's a victim of being done that way in 2012. So, we've had a good discussion on this. I think he understands where we're coming from regarding findings and things of this nature. Any other comments?
Yes. It's odd that you said he was a victim of a previous administration. Well, Mr. Matthews, he's victim twice. He was victim first, that he should have been appointed before, and but then he was demoted the first day that you take him off, and his salary was reduced. So, that's, you know, being victimized twice, and continue still after work under those conditions. You know, he, if he visits with you, it's nothing for him to say, but the right thing to do is to remove the interim from his name. And if it's something that he has done, that you feel that you fire him at some point, you can fire him as interim, or you can fire him as a director. But it's not fair that you bring other people in as interim and they get full pay, and his pay is reduced.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And my understanding from the sponsors of this resolution, that Mr. Matthews didn't have anything to do with this, so I wanted to make that perfectly clear. Also, I wanted to say that, and I heard you say that he was appointed the last day in another administration, of the other administration. It doesn't matter to me, as long as the transaction was a legal transaction, then he was, he was promoted to that position. and he has been a diligent worker with whatever that is asked of him. And sometimes this council disapproves of what he does because he does his job so well. He does what he is told to do and he has to do. But to demote him or to change his title is sort of unkind. And I just feel like that he's doing that job and he's doing it well. And I understand that there are some findings that he didn't have anything to do with. And he's doing the very best job that a person can do. And I just, I think that he should be rewarded with that. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, again, I re-echo what all the crowds can say. I didn't think that he could sit victimized twice, but at this point, I think it would be discriminatory because especially if you bring other interim and they get full pay and he doesn't get what he has to do.
Okay, this particular part, yes, sir.
Whether he's made the head director right now or keeps the interim title, I think we have had a precedent to pass that where they have, pretty well, anytime we've had somebody who's thrown in as interim, they have received the pay of the... In whatever department it was, they received the pay of the... Where that pay level was, I think we do need to do that. Anyway, I need to do, or support for what we've done in the past. This resolution is a non-binding thing anyways.
That's what I was going to get the attorney to reiterate, that it is, it's just that, it's a declaration which has no binding to it whatsoever. So we can certainly take that in consideration. We're hoping that the findings and everything that, from the HUD reports and some of the other things that we've got will be clarified by the 15th of this month. So I'm hoping we'll be able to wrap it up by then. So why don't we go ahead and take this for a vote now? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Yeah, on what Officer Eastland has said, I think that he should be compensated from time up to now. It's other interests.
Duly noted.
Mayor, we have a resolution amending resolutions 3439, 3547, and 3621 to delete properties declared to be a public nuisance.
Whereas the inspection department requests the council to delete from resolution 3439, 3547, and 3621 the properties listed below which were declared to be a public nuisance therein for the reasons set forth regarding each property. Section 1, property belonging to Mr. James Norman because the property has been repaired. Section 2, property belonging to Grandy Rufus and Patty. The property has been repaired. Section 3, property belonging to, it's like Mac and wife Brown because we need to provide additional notice. Section 4, the inspection department will file a copy of this resolution with the Jefferson County Circuit clerk and recorder. So the property is no longer declared to be a public nuisance.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that a resolution amending resolutions 3439, 3547, and 3621 to delete properties declared to be a public nuisance. Floors are open for discussion.
You know, Mayor, may I speak?
Yes, sir.
I read over this, and this is, you know, I'm not going to support this. I knew you got some more people on here. You know, page 2, line 36 through 41. Added back. That needs to be explained while we're taking this off. It's only being fair and righteous.
Okay, yes, um...
Because of the notices, that's what the attorney said. What part you don't understand?
The parties, I received proper notice, and so they're going to provide additional notice.
Excuse me now.
They need private notice as required by law. They did not receive the added notice. Therefore, they're going to receive that notice and then once they receive it, they can stretch that on.
Different parties, Officer Brown's property. Well, I just wanted to clarify because they need to treat people the same way. Let's just call it like it is.
Okay, right, okay. Okay, we've got, Officer May has the floor.
Let's do this thing right. We're not, I'm not going to hide this on page 2. We're going to hide it from the citizen, let them know what's on here. They can't see this paper. You know, I studied that. What was the reason why? I mean, I see the reason on here.
Okay, why don't we let...
Is it right?
Why don't we let Assistant Attorney, City Attorney, Mr. Childers, answer your question, if you'll address it.
The reason that this is going here is because this is here properly. And the work of the chairs and the people who are following the houses and we have to properly do the notice. Oh, Brown actually had nothing to do with our determination. He has, and nobody put this whatsoever in this file. We realize that there was a need for a needed notice. We have to allow, get notice, and we have to oversee properties. This is here properly. There are often the parties who have a valid interest in property and have a condition of this issue. We want to make sure that everybody has got a different cause. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, only thing I want to say is that on a couple of occasions, even when he has been wrong in speaking to issues, you have allowed him to go ahead. I don't know what the reasons are. But if he's wrong, the same thing has to apply to him that hold it, that's not right, let this hit attorney. But you let him complete something that you know is not the correct thing to do. It only causes division when you, we got the legal counsel here to address it in a proper manner. Now, if he has a axe to grind, get outside here and grind it. But not because that you want to say something because the attorneys has already stated what the reasons were. But then we allow him to come up and make these kind of statements, and they're not right, and we need to stop this kind of stuff because all it does is cause division, it causes problems on the council floor. And even when you did do it in a manner, you said, let's let them do it. But you allowed him to continue on when you should have stopped him when he first got started and said, we're going to address it to the council, the legal council.
Okay. All right, any other discussion?
I see it now, forgive me, let's move on.
Okay, all in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have a resolution authorizing the mayor to convey real property lots 4 to 7 of Block 23, Eureka Heights Edition Number 3.
Whereas a fair and reasonable offer has been submitted to the city by Mr. Randy Emerson to purchase the real property described below. And whereas the city has no plans to develop the property and its return to private ownership is in the public interest. And whereas the city council desires to accept the offer and authorize the sale and conveyance. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1. The offer submitted by Mr. Randy Emerson to purchase the real property described below for a consideration of $2,000 for $500 per lot is hereby accepted. The property sold is described below. Section 2, the purchaser shall have 90 days within which to remit full payment of the purchase price to the city collector's office. The form of payment must be acceptable to the city collector. Section 3, upon a full payment, the city attorney's office shall prepare a quick claim deed conveying the property to the purchaser or to the purchaser's designated. The mayor is authorized to execute and deliver to the purchaser the quick claim deed to the described property. The city clerk is authorized to attest the mayor's signature. Section 4, should the purchaser fail to pay in full the stated consideration within the 90-day period, this acceptance of the offer to purchase is withdrawn, and the property shall be returned to the inventory and available for sale.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that the resolution authorizing the mayor to convey real property lots 4 through 7, Block 23, Eureka Heights Edition Number 3. The floor is now open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have a resolution authorizing the mayor to purchase real property, 1021 South Plum Street.
Whereas Mr. JB Junior has offered to convey the property described below to the city for fair consideration. And whereas this property is located behind the Merrill Center and could be used to augment the activities at that facility. And whereas the property should be acquired for a fair consideration, not exceeding $2,500. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the mayor is authorized and direct entering to negotiations for the acquisition of the following described property. The mayor is authorized to expend up to $2,500 for the acquisition of the property. Once an agreement is reached for the conveyance, a budget adjustment for the funds will be prepared and the account identified to pay for the purchase.
Move for adoption, second.
It's been properly moved in second that a resolution authorizing the mayor to purchase real property, 1021 South Plum Street. Floor is now open for discussion. Yes, sir.
This piece of property is owned by Mr. JB Maynard. He called me, uh, a little too... This property is right behind the Merrill Center. Doing progress at this Merrill Center, I think, would be a good asset for company to get this property now. I went to the courthouse and it's listed at $2,500. And after speaking to Mr. Maynard, he's asking for $2,900. But I believe it's just me personally, $2,500 to $2,700 would be adequate enough.
Okay. Are you wanting to leave the resolution as it is with $2,500 then? Or you want, what do you want to do?
$2,700.
You want to amend it then?
It has some wood in the areas. You talking about house? Yes, ma'am.
Has an appraisal been done on this?
From the city?
Yes, sir. Might need to do an appraisal before we...
I do that, and I need to bring this before the committee.
Yes, sir.
I sure will.
I think so. So do we want to go ahead and vote on this? Or you want to, what do we want to do here? What do you want to do with this?
Go ahead, take a vote on it.
Okay.
$2,500.
And $2,500, yeah. Okay, then we can come back if we need to then.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, all in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have a resolution authorizing the mayor to sell and convey real property at 1101 Main Street.
Whereas an offer has been submitted to the city by Liberty Utility Company to purchase the real property described below. And whereas the city has no plans to develop the property and its return to private ownership is in the public interest. And whereas the city council desires to accept the offer and authorize the sale and conveyance. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, that the sale and conveyance of the real property described below to Liberty Utilities Company for consideration and on the terms set out in the attached real estate contract, counteroffer and acceptance is hereby accepted. The property to be conveyed is described as follows. Section 2, the transaction shall be completed within the timeframe set forth in the counteroffer and acceptance or any reasonable extension. The mayor is authorized to execute and deliver to the purchaser a deed to the described property. The city clerk is authorized to attest the mayor's signature. Section 3, should the purchaser fail to pay in full the stated consideration within the agreed timeframe, this authorization shall be null and void, and the property shall be returned to inventory and available for sale.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that the resolution authorizing the mayor to sell and convey real property, 1101 Main Street. The floor is now open for discussion.
Just for verification, it is 45, 45.
The price?
Yes, ma'am.
It's 50, 45,000. And this is a piece of property that was purchased on Main Street by HUD. And from the findings, it was recommended that we sell this piece of property and we'll go back into community development.
Yes, ma'am, I just wanted to get the correct amount.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I was going to ask the same question. I went by the building we paid about a year ago, a year and two years ago, $50,000. And it'd be off our hands, you know, downtown development.
Right, and I believe with this piece of property, just for information purposes, that we purchased it and we put a roof on it, the city did, and I think it was $30,000 on the roof. Yeah, so we had about 80-something thousand in it, so.
Is HUD okay with all this?
Yes, actually, if we did sell it, we'd have to buy.
That's what I was...
Just to add to, in discussion with Liberty, also from purchasing the building, we'll probably create an additional 15 jobs within the company that they will bring in with rehab of the building. They're going to bring some of the services from their company here.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have a resolution authorizing the mayor to sell and convey real property at 720 Cypress Street.
Whereas an offer has been submitted to the city by Calvin L. Trice to purchase the real property described below. And whereas the city has no plans to develop the property and its return to private ownership is in the public interest. And whereas the city council desires to accept the offer and authorize the sale and conveyance. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, that the sale and conveyance of the real property described below to Calvin L. Trice for the consideration and on the terms set out in the attached real estate contract, counteroffer and acceptance is hereby accepted. The property to be conveyed is described as follows. Counteroffer and acceptance or any reasonable, I'm sorry. Section 2, the transaction shall be completed within the timeframe set forth in the counteroffer and acceptance or any reasonable extension. The mayor is authorized to execute and deliver to the purchaser a deed to the described property. The city clerk is authorized to attest the mayor's signature. Section 3, should the purchaser fail to pay in full the stated consideration within the agreed timeframe, this authorization shall be null and void, and the property shall be returned to inventory and available for sale.
Move for adoption, second.
It's been properly moved in second that the resolution authorizing the mayor to sell and convey real property, 720 Cypress Street. Floor is now open for discussion.
Is this part of the HUD?
Yes, sir, it is. Mm-hmm, it is. One of the findings that we have to sell it.
HUD has said this is okay for us to do this transaction as we do it.
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a resolution amending... Resolution 3539 awarding the Jefferson County Community Development Corporation Chodo Funds Home Funds for the contract year 2011.
Whereas the Jefferson County Community Development Corporation is recognized by the city as a qualified community housing development organization as defined by the regulations of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Whereas pursuant to Resolution 3539, JCCDC was awarded Chodo Home Funds for the contract year 2011 in the amount of $100,000 in anticipation of the federal funding that the city of Pine Bluff receives for economic and community development. Because the city received less than the anticipated amount, the funds awarded to JCCDC should be reduced to reflect the percentage of the federal funds actually received. And whereas the previous allocation of Chodo Home Funds in the amount of $100,000 to JCCDC should be reduced to $65,976. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that the 2011 Chodo Home Funds allocated to JCCDC in resolution 35, 39 in the amount of $100,000 shall be reduced to $65,976. Economic and community development is hereby directed to allocate 2011 Chodo Home Funds in the amount of $65,976 to be used in accordance with the guidelines set forth in 24 CFR 92300 through, 24 CFR 92301 and all other federal and state and local laws which govern the use of these funds.
Move for adoption.
It's been properly moved in second that a resolution amending resolution 35, 39, awarding the Jefferson County Community Development Corporation, Chodo Home Funds for the contract year 2011. Floor is now open for discussion. Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have a resolution, mayor, awarding Jefferson County Community Development Corporation project proceeds from sale of property.
Whereas the, whereas Jefferson County Community Development Corporation is recognized by the city as a qualified community housing development organization as defined by the regulations of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Whereas on or about December 2nd, 2011, JCCDC entered into a contract with the city of Pine Bluff to build three houses with monies awarded pursuant to resolution 39, 35, 39. JCCDC completed construction of all three houses on or about July 2012. Whereas the, whereas the Pine Bluff Economic and Community Development Department received, I'm sorry, I don't have the change, little change, received $106,000 in program income as a result of the sale of one house. Because JCCDC has continued their efforts to construct new housing to improve the overall appearance and marketability of the University Park area, JCCDC should be allocated the program income associated with the sale. And whereas it is, it is a desire of the city council of the city of Pine Bluff to allocate $106,000 to JCCDC for the purpose of constructing new homes in the area. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that JCCDC is here, is hereby allocated the program income generated from the sale of one home in the amount of $106,000. Section two, economic and community development is directed to transfer this amount into JCCDC Chodo Reserve for the purpose of constructing new homes in the designated area to be used in accordance with the guidelines set forth in 24 CFR 92300 through 301 and all other federal, state, and local laws which govern the use of these funds.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that a resolution awarding the Jefferson County Community Development Corporation project proceeds from sale of property. Floor is now open for discussion. I would like to state on this particular one, that a contract was done last week, am I right, Mr. Matthews, regarding, okay, regarding this? And the contract stated that this, that the Community Development Corporation would not receive proceeds from the sale. Am I, am I right on this?
There are separate issues. One of the issues were that they had a request in the home program. Some Chodos, other cities are allowed to keep the proceeds in their own account. This is not the case. In this case is, when they sold for a shooting, the money came back to the city.
Mm-hmm.
As program income. At that point, the money came back into the home fund. And what they're asking now is for additional allocation from that, for that money that they've got. So they don't actually get the money, they make invoices to the city in order to build another unit. So we still have actual control of the money based on invoices.
All right.
They're kind of two separate issues.
Okay.
Yes, we did kind of fight against that, we got it all worked out.
Okay, thank you.
They, excuse me, they built three and they've only sold one?
Yes, yes. They've only sold one. And we've had several meetings with the Chodo. As soon as we get the agreement and everything ironed out, get the mayor's signature, we have aggressive marketing plan that we're working with them on to get the other two sold.
These, these are the houses back behind the university?
Yes, sir.
Right. Took those, they're very nice, I'm surprised they haven't sold them.
Well, the marketing, but it, the market is picking up. And also, they were running out of funds, so their marketing plan kind of got stifled a little bit. So, but they, they have worked aggressively with Tyson and the International Paper on, on, on getting the market out there. Well, that, that's the issue we're working out with JT. The street was initially a part of the plan. JT has to coordinate from his, his staffing point of view and his, his schedule. So that is also in the works.
I'm kind of surprised they sold them in July and they're just now getting funding.
As I said, they, they ran into some problems with the financing because they used most of their funds. So the marketing of those two homes, if you don't know, they're back there.
Yeah, I know.
You understand? So they're gonna get out and do a little bit better job on marketing the plan.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews. Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have a resolution seeking grant assistance for an airport apron rehabilitation project.
Whereas the Pine Bluff Municipal Airport Commission is seeking a grant from Federal Aviation Administration and the Arkansas Department of Aeronautics for the construction of the apron rehabilitation at the Pine Bluff Municipal Airport. And whereas the estimated cost of said project is 300 and 26,625 dollars and the FAA grant being sought is 90% federally funded and 10% owner funded, in which the 10% may be reimbursable from the Arkansas Department of Aeronautics. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that the Pine Bluff City Council supports the efforts of the Municipal Airport Commission contingent upon receiving the grant offer from the FAA and the department, and the Arkansas Department of Aeronautics. And section two, that the Pine Bluff City Council, upon receipt of said grant, accepts the grant and authorizes the mayor to execute a full mentioned grant agreement.
Move for adoption.
It's been properly moved in second that a resolution seeking grant assistance for an airport apron rehabilitation project. Floor is now open for discussion. Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Second.
Close to 30.
Thank you, sir.